All right, can I have your attention? At seven o'clock, I'm going to call this meeting to order. The first order of business is to elect a moderator. Is there a...
I nominate Jim Tripp.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any other nominations?
I move nominations opposed.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Jim, can you come... All in favor of Jim as a moderator, please say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Can I just talk?
They're recording it.
Fantastic.
All right, I request the clerk waive the call of the meeting. The legal notice, as well as... Well, first of all, can you waive the call of the meeting?
I move we waive the call of the meeting because it is, I think, three pages long. Our copy's over here, and an abbreviated version will be read at the time of the call. But I think you might need a second.
Can we do just a second? Yeah, can we get a second?
I might second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Is this the call of the meeting? Is that what you're trying to do?
It's very similar to that, yes. We can read it if you like, there's no reason we can't. It's just...
No, I'm just curious what it was.
Yes.
It's not just that it's similar to this.
Yeah, it's very similar. You want to take a look, Tim?
No, that's fine.
Okay. Yeah, just so you guys know, what I have up here is the call of the meeting that went in, as well as the return of notice that verifies it went in, so that everybody knows we did get both accomplished. All right, any more discussion? All in favor? Opposed? All right, also, take a motion to waive the reading of the return of notice. Do we need to do that? Or no?
Just instruct me to record.
Oh, okay. All right, perfect. All right, then I'll ask the clerk to record the call of the meeting and include the return of notice in the minutes of the meeting. Thank you.
I do have a motion that I wanted to read and enter. Can I make the motion now?
Yes, you may.
I'll stand up so you can hear me. And this is more the abbreviated version of what is on this three or four-page version over here. I move that the resolution to appropriate $10 million for construction of a new public park located on Route 17, reconstruction and repair of town roads and sidewalks, and miscellaneous capital expenditures, and finance the appropriation by issuing the town's bonds, notes, and other obligations in an amount not to exceed $10 million be approved, and that the reading of the entire resolution, which is over here on this table, be waived, and that a copy of the resolution be included in the minutes of this special town meeting.
Okay, do I have a second? Thank you, we have a second. I would like to, at this time, invite discussion on the motion.
If I could again, I just wanted to reiterate that while there's a lot of verbiage here, it does help you, I think, understand a little bit more about the details associated with various aspects of the resolution. So if you didn't get a copy, I encourage you to take one, and you can always come home.
After that motion, is there still time for discussion, or is that closing discussion?
It's right now.
Yeah, because as I understand it tonight, there's not a vote on the motion tonight. What will happen is we'll adjourn this meeting, and the motion will go to question on the ballot on November 8th. That's why, so now's the time if we want to have discussion. That's why I invited you to come up. If you want to have discussion, they are recording the meeting, so please go up to the podium. Give your name and address, and we can go from there.
Our town attorney is here. Mr. Shear?
Good evening. My name is Bruce Chadwick from Shepherd and Goodwin. The actual vote on the resolution was removed from tonight's meeting by the Board of Selectmen when they sent it to the referendum back in August, when they approved that. And therefore, under state statute, there's no vote to be made on the resolution tonight. Just discussion. You can talk about it, and ask questions, and get comments on it. No amendments are in order because it's been sent to the ballot already for November 8th. So the vote is solely on November 8th. No votes are tonight on the motion. That's by state statute and by your charter.
Why are we putting the motion on?
Because it needs to be in the record of the meeting. Yes, we can discuss it. Without a motion to put something on the floor, technically, under Robert's rules, you shouldn't even be discussing something. It should be something before the body to discuss. And we need to have the actual resolution in the minutes so that if the projects are approved, and we, as bond council, help the town go out and finance it and issue bonds, we need to know that all the legalese is in the record of the meeting. Okay? Certainly.
I'd like to ask something. My name's Richard Barningham, and I live on 9 Grace Lane. We received this in the newspaper the other day, and it shows the blue is current outstanding debt, and it shows it going down to nothing, and this proposed bond is the orange. This is assuming there's no other debt in the next 20 years. What's the reality of that happening?
I don't know if you want to cover that, David. I will also say, Susan Bransfield for Selectmen, I think that's a good question. I'm going to have David get into more detail. But as far as the information that we put out in that flyer, it had to be approved by our town attorney to make sure that we were just giving facts and information. And then I wanted to show, at least in the beginning of that chart, what the impact would be over the course of the next few years, so that people would have some understanding as this debt, if it comes on, how would that affect a typical homeowner. So that chart shows you the typical impact to, I think it's $150,000 property, the assessed value, which is 70% of the full value. So that gives you an idea what your... If that's your typical house, what you're paying now, and then the orange shows you what you'd be paying later. I think you make a good point that over the next several years, we would anticipate there would be other debt or other opportunities that the town might have to engage in, and we don't know it at this point, so that's... Well, we don't...
You don't have anything out in the back of your mind that's going to happen in the next few years?
Well, there's lots of things that could happen. I know that Fire Company 3 is interested in another building, but there's no approval of that. We always have to make sure that our town buildings, and our roads, and our schools are maintained, but I can't say anything on that sheet that isn't already approved or known. Right, David?
That's right. I mean, this graph, which we created, only addresses the outstanding debt. Oh, Mr. Moderator, do I need to identify myself?
Yes.
David Eysenthal, Unibank Fiscal Advisory Services, Financial Advisor in town, Portland, Connecticut. The graph that you referenced does just look at the outstanding debt, which is, as you say, is the blue, and the proposed debt, which is in the orange. And that was our charge, but, and as you allude, if there's additional debt that's proposed in the future, it could well have an impact on that. But I think what we're looking at right now is just the impact of the tax rate from the outstanding debt and this proposed bond issue.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion?
Tim LaVoy, 15 Chatto Hollow Road, Portland. My only question, you know, it's kind of maybe it's a broad question, is the... Around the sidewalk issue. Because I know there's been a lot of stuff I've read over the years about sidewalks and who's responsible for them, and what's going to happen. And, you know, where I lived in other towns, you know, the homeowner that owned it was responsible for the sidewalk. And I know in other towns, I've had to foot that bill. And how does this address that? Is this, you know, is this talking about replacing sidewalks that are currently in front of homeowners that need repair, repairing those sidewalks? Or is it primarily about new... I know it talks about schools, and putting in sidewalks adjacent to school areas, which I think is great. But even that, are those sidewalks that are in disrepair that homeowners should have taken care of and didn't? Or has that issue even been resolved in town as to who's responsible for those? So it's kind of a bigger...
Michael, would you want to...
Do you want me to take that?
Sure.
Here. You just stand near the call button. So I'm on the sidewalk committee with Fred, and I know the sidewalk issue has been an ongoing concern in town. We're in the process of discussing and revising the policy right now. Right now, it has the homeowners being responsible for the sidewalk. However, the enforcement of that has been very little over the last bunch of years. So we are looking to actually redo the policy right now. The $1 million that's in this bond is going to be prioritized based on proximity to school. We're trying to do it within a certain range to the school, and we're prioritizing to get the most out of that. So we will be looking at using both, you know, the folks that we have in town, as well as outsourcing things as well to get the most back for the buck that we can with the $1 million. But that policy being looked at right now, we're hoping to have it done before this referendum. It most likely will be soon after that. But we are... We do recognize it's a problem and an issue because it's a little confusing, but we do want to clarify that. Our feeling right now is that we feel it should be the town is where we're leaning toward, but we're just looking at the details of that. So it is not resolved yet, but we expect it to be before the end of the year.
But historically, the policy was that the homeowners were responsible for that, but no one ever enforced that. So now the town kind of gets to put the bill for that?
Yes, and we've looked at, and the number of towns, and many of the larger towns, like Hartford and the big cities, is it is up to them to do the sidewalks. And the smaller towns, we're often assuming the responsibility of the sidewalks in general in Connecticut, but we're looking to adopt something that makes a lot of sense, and most likely will be something along the way with the town doing it. But we haven't clarified that yet, but we expect to within the next... Certainly by the end of the year, we're hoping to do that, so.
I mean, how far would a $1 million go towards...
You know, we're going to find...
It seems like that would be a huge cost.
We had gotten one estimate, I believe, from Rick, estimating a couple million dollars to do all of them, including tearing out some and putting some back. We think we can make the $1 million go pretty far, but we should have a better idea. If this does pass, that'll be the first thing we're going to look at. But there are some options. I mean, we've looked into places that will elevate certain ones, shave it down, kind of repair it instead of tearing out. So we're looking at all the options right now, so.
Thank you.
Okay, additional comment?
My name is Bill Petzel. I live on Gospel Lane here in Portland. To expand upon the sidewalk situation, number one is, can we be a little more specific as to where the sidewalks are going to go, whether it's which school? We have four or five schools to begin with.
So what we've looked at is, we've looked at, I believe, a half-mile range, so can I get that number right?
Yep.
Within a half-mile of the schools?
Give you the circle. That is...
Yeah, half-mile radius.
Of every school?
Of the four schools that we have in town, we've looked at within a half-mile radius of those schools. And we're looking at not just the radius, but also which ones need the most repair, which ones, you know, which one, if we need to rebuild any in areas that it might be dangerous. We're looking at the safety of the pathways to the schools as our number-one priority. So that may eat up most or all of that $1 million. We know it's not going to cover everything, but we wanted to start with those walkways to the schools. So that's the first place we're looking at. I know Rick and others have walked the various schools and make notes of the different places where there might be issues with, you know, too much of a gap. I think it's a half, a three-quarters of an inch, and it can't be more than a gap like that. But we're looking at that right now. But we will have more information. Sure, we have a great deal of initial information on that. We will have more information on specifics that we're looking at within the next couple weeks.
For example, the Gilisleeve School, you have sidewalks on Main Street, so you'd be talking about preparing some of those on the side of Main Street.
Yes.
Again, I'm assuming, but I don't know for a fact, that those sidewalks are on, not on public property, they're on private owners' property on the homes. Am I correct there?
Yes. I agree, yes.
Well, I'd just like...
If I could... Bill, the memo that I handed to Mike was something that Rick Kelsey had worked up for us, and it actually shows a total of his estimate at 3.2 million, if you looked at all of the various streets that could be encompassed around our schools, including state property. And probably the biggest question is, who pays on state right-of-way? The town right-of-way, some arguments in many towns, including towns surrounding us, they believe that the sidewalks are part of almost the roadway or the travelway, so they do repair them. There's an old ordinance in Portland that does say that the homeowner or the property owner accompanying the sidewalk is responsible. But there's been quite a bit of discussion by this board as to whether that is correct or not. But in terms of properties around the schools, there's a fair amount that is town-owned and does need to be repaired, and if there is opportunity for the sidewalk committee to continue to work, there could be a sidewalk program that we would be encouraged to begin, and this money, this $1 million, would give us some money toward trying to improve the walkability associated with the areas around our schools. But I will tell you that the state road, Main Street, is going to be a challenge because there's a lot of sidewalk there that needs repair, and the state has told me that, excuse me, they don't fix the sidewalks, that it's up to the community to fix the sidewalks, even though it's in and on their property.
Is that in front of the stores down here, or is that up in the Gilisleeve area? Whereabouts is this property that the state owns?
Well, the state owns all of Main Street.
Yeah, but I'm saying the property. I walk Main Street almost every morning from Gilisleeve on down, and I know some of the sidewalks are in very bad shape, and others are not bad, and some of them are... But the bottom line is, I can't see why the town would be footing the bill for somebody if it's not on town property.
Well, the 3.2 million includes all of those sidewalks. One million is only in the bond, so we're not going to probably start with the state because we don't know as... I'm not disagreeing with you. I understand what you're saying.
Well, like I say, I don't want to start a precedent here and have, you know, paid certain things, why don't you go out on Gospel Lane and put a sidewalk in front of my house or something, if you're going to pay for it, or whatever it may be. I can remember, I wasn't married that many years ago, and I moved on Arbid Road, and all of a sudden, they said they're going to put sewers in. Well, sewers are a great deal, but they weren't for free. Everybody had to pay for them as they went by the house, whether they wanted to hook up or not. The bottom line is, a program should come up with the people that are on Main Street or wherever it is, where they should be made to pay. However, the town should give them terms, as far as I'm concerned, so that, I mean, so they don't... In this economy, which is not great, many people, I'm sure, can't afford a big chunk of money. But if it's a few dollars a month, the town of Portland should have some kind of a program so that they have a time payment plan, but I don't think it should be a free plan, a freebie.
Well, the $1 million does not nearly cover what the total cost would be. So I think that a program is advisable. Michael Pelton is on the sidewalk committee, and one of the things they have talked about in the past is developing a program whereby there is some partnership associated with property owners. I can't say that that decision has been made yet, Bill, because I'll tell you, as I said a few minutes ago, there's been a lot of discussion about improvements of sidewalks in our community, and the final decision hasn't been made. But as far as in the budget itself, there isn't a large amount of money even to begin a program. So we're asking that this be included in the bond question, and that's why it's there.
All right, like I say, I just want to go on record that I just, you know, I'm a little bit concerned the way these things are worded, that the bottom line is, we're going to... Taxpayers are going to pay for everybody when we shouldn't be. We've got enough taxes as it is, so, you know, and I understand Main Street sidewalks also. There is a... Part of the problem on Main Street sidewalks is that there's a lot of it down my end, near Indian Hill Avenue, is great big brownstone slabs. They're huge, and 80% of them are in pretty good shape, except they're here and here, and that's the problem. What are you going to do? Just go down there and just rip everything out and then, you know, make everything cement or something? And people do have some good sidewalks there, but they need some fixing up. They don't necessarily have to be all replaced either. But I know, I felt flat on my face the first time I walked on Main Street a couple years ago because of the, you know, unevenness.
The unevenness, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional discussion?
Mike, what... The committee around executive complete streets work, or is that...
No, no, it's the actual sidewalk committee. So Fred's been on that for years, and he doesn't just join. He's a rookie member.
Oh, so it's a Board of Selectmen subcommittee on sidewalks. Are those meetings posted?
Yeah, they are.
Brian's here.
Minutes are available in the town clerk office.
And I would encourage anyone that has feedback that was given or in the process of looking at that right now, so I think any feedback is very helpful to understand what, what makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I agree with his sentiments. I mean, it's a big cost for the taxpayers to take on. People knew for years it was their responsibility, and no one ever enforced it. You know, okay, I get that, but you shouldn't just send that bill to anybody else.
Some of our selectmen, Jim, said that while that ordinance is in place, he has questioned, not like, not me, but questioned whether that is actually correct. He says that there's arguments to be made that that's not necessarily correct, the way the ordinance is written. So this committee is working out a program, which I think is a better alternative.
I guess I don't understand what that means. It's not... If it says that, is it... You're not reading it properly, or that it's not a true representation?
I think what I'm saying is, there's always going to be arguments that people make on both sides of an issue. So, and that has been here, and he's on the record. Brian Flood has said that he doesn't believe that the ordinance is correct. And then I've talked with some of our attorneys that help us with our ordinances, and they state that it is. So that will be resolved, and I think the best of all worlds would be some type of a program that would be able to improve our sidewalks, as I think there's general consensus that we have a need to improve our sidewalks and the walkability. And how we do that, we have a very small amount of money that we set aside every year just to take care of the sidewalks in front of Town Hall, or the sidewalks maybe in front of Valley View School, something of that nature. But we don't have any real seed money to be able to really begin a program of improving the walkability of our sidewalks. And just any day you go out and you see many, many people walking, particularly on Main Street and some of the other streets. I know I walk East Main a lot, and the sidewalks, especially if you're walking in the early morning or the evening, you can't walk on the sidewalks because you're probably going to fall down, because you can't see the rise and ebb of the sidewalk. So it's something that we're going to be very careful as to how we proceed, and I think it's certainly a viable option for us. I hope that answers your question.
And if I could add one more thing as well, I mean, now that, as a town, we've adopted to complete streets as well in our last meeting, it ties in, we really do want the town to be more walkable, more pedestrian-friendly, and all that kind of stuff. So having, you know, the seed money initially started, I think is a really good step forward. There's a lot of positive things, but we do have to clarify that, and that's something that we will...
If this thing was shot down in two weeks, you wouldn't abandon the sidewalk and hope to do it, hope to do the sidewalk. I agree that they need fixing. I'm not... But is this an all-or-nothing thing, or what?
It's one question, and if the question fails, then we do not bond any money. We're not authorized to.
Would you guys go back and say, okay, we want to do the sidewalks, will this put that up for a vote later on?
Can't... Your question is, can you have another question at another time? Sure.
Okay.
Right? Yeah, absolutely.
Mike Galati for Victoria Road.
He's taller than I am, everybody.
On a few things that the fellows question, if it does get voted down, I'm also chairman of Long Range Capital Planning. If it gets voted down, we'll have to come up with Plan B on all these projects, which could be done through the process of budgeting. And on some of the questions on the sidewalks, I do agree, it shouldn't be on the town to replace all the sidewalks. The ordinance does state now that the homeowner is responsible for it, reporting a million dollars in without even having the ordinance changed already, so I...
Does he think that there are equal buybacks?
The sidewalk issue is still an ongoing issue. On some of these things, the 500... I'm not in favor of the question at all. I don't like the way it was divvied out in the money. There's... We had a... Long Range did a plan that was requested by the Board of Selectmen. There's a total of $33 million of needs throughout the town within years. What's counting the water and sewer department. We had a list of absolute needs, less than one year of $2,700,000. We put in $500,000, which is going to take care of some of the needs. I'm not in favor of the 20-year bond, because a lot of these projects that are going to be done with this, if it's approved in 20 years, you're going to be maintaining or fixing most of these projects, as in the park, all the blacktop fields. That place will probably be renovated one or two times before the 20-year bond is even paid off. Same with sidewalks. They would deteriorate 20 years. Some of the things like roof cut, the condensers at the library, we just replaced them fully at 15 years, and this money that's going here now is just to replace some of the parts on the current things. 20 years, I think, is way too long to... For this bond, it just doesn't make any sense to me. This is... If it's roads, it's one thing, the last 75 years are new building, they'll last quite a long time, but not on these items in this bond question. Does anybody have any questions for Long Range Capital Planning, why I'm standing up here? Far away, there's a lot of big numbers.
You have one, yes.
There's also issues for, like, the parking wreck. They got $2.1 million of needs on current parks that we are not even addressing. And if this question goes through, we all know, you know, we got to pay for it, then what are we going to do for the future? I mean, we've been putting money away through leasing to get capital projects done and equipment, but, you know, we all know the state of Connecticut is not on shaky ground right now with their money. We got reevaluation. It's... I don't know where we're going to go. I want to see other things get done that are absolute needs, and some of the stuff I just don't agree with in this bond question. David?
Come on, Dave.
Yeah, just, please give your name and...
To address the assumptions we made as far as this projection here, just to correct what may be a mistaken impression, we're assuming that the sidewalks and the equipment would be paid over 10 years, actually. The roads and the park would be paid over 20, but the other pieces, which would be approximately $1 million and a half of the bond issue, would be paid over 10 rather than 20 years. So taking into account the useful asset life, I just wanted to make sure we made that point.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Are we addressing the wants before needs here?
It's all interpretation. On Long Range Capital, I would say yes. Under the wants, if I can find my paperwork here, things on the wants, it's like the fire department wants a new firehouse at company number three. That's not happening yet. The park was under a wants, and they asked us why, because there's not a park there. A need to me is something like, you need to fix the roof... to me is something like you need to fix the roof, the parking lot needs repair, furnaces need repair, windows are falling out, sidewalks are falling apart. Those are tangible things, it's like your house, you need to do it. You know, if your house is falling apart, do you go buy a summer home? That's a want, you know what I mean? That's the way we're looking at it. There's been discussion between us and the Parking Wreck Commission, but that's the way Long Range Planning put that together, that is a want. The sidewalks were something through the Board of Selectmen that they did on their own. They added this, and also with the road. That wasn't not through Long Range for capital planning. Anybody else? Okay. Shirley?
Shirley Olson, fourteen Russell Avenue, Portland.
Shirley, you wanna pull the mic down? I don't think, you're a very quiet person.
Oh. He's trying to knock me out before I speak. Okay. On the roads on Main Street, I have a question. All right. Main Street is a state road. Now, does the state own all the way to the boundary line of the person's property? Because on Main Street, because it's old, it has all those brownstone property markers along the way, and the sidewalk is before the property owner's property. Does the town own any property between the homeowner's property and the state's property, or is it all state property?
Um, the, the state owns a fairly wide right-of-way on Main Street, and, um, the town does not own the right-of-way on Main Street. Main Street is owned by the state of Connecticut. It's Route seventeen A, and it's owned by the state of Connecticut. Now, the town does own property on Main Street, obviously. We own Brownstone Intermediate School, and we own, um, the area between the Middlesex Hospital and Malili's. We own that parking lot in the back. We own the parking lot across the street, next to the Police Department. But in terms of ownership of Main Street, it is not owned by the town of Portland.
I'm looking in the other direction. I'm looking in the direction of not the downtown section, but rather from the post office towards Gildersleeve.
The young Gildersleeve School, and the firehouse, and the other firehouse.
Mm-hmm.
But you're asking-
Who owns the property? Who owns the state, who owns the road between Main Street and the property owners between Fairview Street and Church Street?
State.
All right.
Okay, Ella?
Come on, Ralph.
Ralph Sampaio, twelve Carousel Drive, Portland. So, I don't know how I'll speak to this. I, I guess I'll speak first as a chair to just clarify some things. Chair of the Park and Wreck Commission. So, we, we certainly have had a lot of conversations with Long Range Capital about needs, wants, and all that. The only thing I would tell you is that the two million dollar number for park, for park and wreck really pertains to a plan that was put together years ago that looked at trying to do major renovations at Valley View, Gildersleeve, and, um, I don't know if Middlesex was included, I don't remember. But realistically, that number's kinda old. When I look at what we really need from a park and wreck standpoint, it's probably in the three hundred and eighty thousand dollar range that we talk about. I think that that can achieve a lot what we'd wanna do, you know, beside the park I'm talking about. From the standpoint of what we're trying to really do is, which should've been done a long time ago probably, is to make sure that we add irrigation to all of our fields, which we fail to have right now. The ones that we do have irrigation came through this summer. The ones that don't have irrigation struggled. And so, you know, that's a big focus, regardless of what happens with the park. Using the small funding that we get besides the park, if we got the park, we would look to try to do irrigation, 'cause that's really critical. So that is, uh, my, uh, talk as a chair. From a personal standpoint, when we talk about wants and needs, um, you know, you know, my perspective on it, which I, you know, detailed, I think, with the last time when I gave my presentation on the park, is that, you know, what we're trying to do is make sure that, from a town standpoint, we offer the services that are typical in a lot of towns that are around us. That's when you look at things like the splash pad. That's why those things arrive. Um, you know, from, as, I really, you know, from the, obviously I'm very much involved with Park and Wreck, but now as a town own, as a owner of property in town, you have to look at what the value of your property is. And, you know, that's why we look at, is by, by adding the park, you know, from me as, and again, I'm speaking as a citizen at this time. I'm looking from the standpoint of it adds value to my property. Because if people don't wanna move to Portland, you're not gonna have the money that you're gonna need to start with, because people are not gonna be here to be paying taxes. So, you know, what you need to do is maybe look around, and, and I, this is how I look at it. I look at it, I see the for sale signs that are in Portland, and I see how long they're there. And to me, that starts to reflect on whether we are still relevant in this area to being a place for young families to land. And I think it's very critical. And that's why, um, you know, I, I, we really need, you know, and, and I know that, you know, especially when we talk, when I'm talking to the seniors and we talk about this, you know, at some point, they're gonna be selling their property for whatever reason. And you're gonna want the best value for that property. And you, for that, it has to be that people wanna actually physically come here. We're an aging community, we need to get over that hump, we need to start bringing young families in again. And I know overall, across the whole state, there's a drop-off of students in schools, but ultimately, we have to continue to bring young families in here, because I don't think we wanna be on that track to age. So from, from a personal standpoint, I am really concerned about the value of my property, and that's why I think it's a need. You know, obviously, Mike and I will agree, agree to disagree on this one, but we have spirited discussions all the time about it. But I, that's, I just wanted to speak from the standpoint of, a personal standpoint, and from the standpoint of what we have as a Park and Wreck Commission, what we need and what we really need, as opposed to the numbers that might be in Long Range Capital, so.
I have a question.
Sure.
I think I read in the River East, a couple of fields that are being used on the Tomaso field, Tomaso garage, are private property. What do we, what is the story here? Do we rent it?
Okay, yep. So, the Oakwood field that is behind the town garage, that is private property owned by the Oakwood Soccer Club that's out of Glastonbury. So they bought that property, put in those turf fields a number of years ago. So the town doesn't have access to them unless you wanna pay a lot of money to make use of them. So that's, that's just how it is. We don't use it.
That's what I was thinking.
Yep, yep. So, so then, that's the one behind the town garage. Then what we have is, we have Camp Ingersoll, which are fields at the Y, that is the main part where the Portland soccer clubs make use of. And we lease those properties. That, there's two fields there, we lease them, we don't own them. We've had a good relationship all these years with them, and they let it, let us lease it for, you know, not a lot of money. So there's not a savings in terms of the lease itself. But the situation we have there is, the property continues to need work. And so it comes down to whether you want, as a talent, to wanna put money into that property. So we have those for, for soccer. And then what you have is for baseball, we have Tomaso Field, which sounds like it's been around forever. But it's kinda in that same situation that it needs work, it needs a lot of work. It contin- it, every year we do work on it because it, it's, it's, it sinks because it's on a town landfill. So it sinks, and every year we throw dirt in there, and we fix it up and get by. But realistically, you know, we, we wanna get out of there because we don't wanna put, again, don't wanna be putting money into property that you don't own.
Well, how much do we, how much do we pay?
Again, the, the leasing, the leasing prop, leasing of those properties are pittance of a, a number. It's really, when you look at the maintenance, is whether it comes into play.
Has anybody voted Tomaso, very big corporation, say, we turn it over to us for its dollar property? I mean, I don't understand, I don't think they need it.
I don't think there's any-
I don't think they need the income.
Yeah.
They're telling me that. Why don't they, why don't we, has anybody asked them if we turn it over to us, or to save any, save some money there? Then you can put money over.
Yeah, I don't think, there's nothing official that is on, on the table for another, a company in that area taking it over.
So another piece you're saying, nobody's ever thought of, like, we take over the property and tell?
Well, informally, I think things have been talked about and discussed, but there's nothing formal at this point. I mean, obviously, if we were to get out of there and can be proactive, maybe, you know, there might be more advertising for, making it for that use. But, but right now, we use it. It is an integral part of our little league, so it's difficult to, to get out of there now.
Did you say that with the landfill?
Used to be, yep.
What's the other piece of property that's mentioned in the-
So Ingers, so we have Ingersoll, the two fields at Ingersoll, the Y, the Tomaso, which is the second field. And then the, the one about Oakwood is just because we don't own it. I don't think, that was the three that, that were mentioned.
Oh, sorry, was it, if you just mentioned two, I thought it was, I could've read a lot out of them. I thought one of them behind the, where they pick the sand up.
Bransfield.
Oh, Brans, well, that, yeah, the, the, the reference to Bransfield Park was that there's a main walking trail that's up there, and they continue to mine the sand up there to make use, whether in town or selling it. So the risk is that potentially that would be impacted from that operation. That's the reference you're talking of, I believe.
So it's part of the noise that, that's on the, on the-
Yeah.
It's a problem.
Anyone else have a question for me, before I walk away?
Okay, anybody else have any comments for discussion?
We'll go back to you.
Hi, Donna Cody, thirteen Old County Way, Portland. A question regarding the, the amounts within the ten million dollars. Are those fixed amounts, or can they be moved around? And I have one other question after that.
Bruce Chudry, once again, we have, provide flexibility in the resolution for the Board of Selectmen to move monies between projects, as long as the ten million dollars is not exceeded. So, they can be moved around, and the scope of the project can be reduced by the Board of Selectmen as well. So there is flexibility within resolutions to move monies around.
So, for example, the park could be changed from five million and money allocated to another project?
There has to be, it can't be a substantial change. For, in other words, the, the Board of Selectmen couldn't say, we're gonna spend eight million dollars on the park and reduce the other ones, or eliminate projects entirely. That would run afoul to what the voters are actually working on. What we're voting on, what we're thinking of is something, if something comes in a little bit over budget, or something is on a little under budget, the roads and sidewalks perhaps, there's some flexibility to move monies that are in non-substantial amounts. But if they were substantial, they'd have to go back to the voters to ask for permission.
Is there a definition, or a percentage?
That would, we'd have to see when the, when the numbers come in, when they go, all the projects go out to bid. And I think these are based on, you know, certain cost estimates. If there's a question about that, then I'm sure we'll be consulting with the town to advise them. Okay?
Okay. Thank you. My second question is a follow-up. I think Mike had said there were twenty-year terms, and then you had said there were ten-year terms. So those are things to be decided. We're not voting on terms or amounts of bonds at this time?
Yes, the, the resolution provides that the First Selectman, Deputy First Selectman, and Director of Finance, or any two of them, determine all the terms and conditions of bonds, notes issued by the town. So they would come up with a plan, work with a financial advisor as to what the length of the bond issue should be for the different projects, and go out to the marketplace and sell the bonds accordingly. So that's built into the resolution as well.
Okay, thank you.
I am not against the town park. I'm not against the concept of the town park. However, we have three parks that need to be rehabbed, improved, maintenance. The longer these three are put off, the more the cost is gonna be. And someone was talking about property values. One of these is behind me, and if, actually, eight homes on my street. If anybody would like to come and see the condition of the edge of the property, I'd be more than happy to show it to them. You're talking about home values? It's a mess. And Sean Dwyer and Ralph, Portland Police, have done a lot of work since Sean came in relation to taking care of some of the problems that arose at the, um, they're calling it the Middlesex Avenue, um, park. The Police Department took, took care of the fact that the toilet paper was being thrown from the porta potty out into the trees of the property owners. Portland Police came down, the porta potty was moved to the other area. Another issue was, an out, a, um, football player from another town was urinating through the fence in my backyard, and there were children on either side of me, preschool, and the oldest one was probably in second grade. All those problems have been cleared up. There's very few problems anymore. The lights used to be left on, on the, um, field. Sean, he wants to know when the lights are left on. They're not left on anymore, because Sean worked very hard to make sure that the electrical belt was coming down. And I don't disagree with Ralph's analysis of making the town grow by increasing the population. However, simultaneously, there needs to be business brought into the town. And that's not happening. And the Elm Crest Propert Project failed for a second time. This needs to be looked at carefully. Really, really carefully. Thank you.
So just to clarify, with regards to Middlesex Avenue, it is our top priority, other than dealing with the park. So, we are, we have started things down there, we are doing work, so it's not been lost, and we hope to continue to strive on that. So I just wanna make sure people don't think it's totally lost, and because we're doing the park, or striving for the park, that we're gonna lose track of that, 'cause that certainly is not the case. that certainly is not the case.
When heavy equipment comes down and starts taking care of that...
All right, additional discussion?
Yeah.
Going to announce yourself this time?
I'm going to try to be. Mike Pelton, two seven seven Paley Farm Road. So I'm also on the board of selectmen, so this will be as a citizen of town. I know, I've heard two things that have come up a great deal over the last couple of months about this whole referendum and the project for the park, one of which has been want versus need, and I've had a number of discussions with folks about those that think it's a want versus a need. I personally strongly feel that it's a need, because any town you live in, it's not only the roads that get you, there's also the things in town. And having, doing what I do during the day, I've probably spoken to every parent in town that has a child, and there's a, there's a vast majority that feel that it's a need. They take their kids to other parks, they go out of the town, they spend their money in Colchester and Glastonbury and other places. So keeping those families in town, and those are a lot of newer residents, is vitally important. That increases value. That gives a reason for people to want to come to Portland and stay in Portland. It also ties into the second thing that has been discussed, and that's why everything's together, why not separate issues on there. And now I'll put my board of selectmen hat on, and one of the things I can relate to in one of the discussions, and one of the threads of discussions we had, is do we want to do them separately, or do we want to do them together? And I think there was a strong feeling on the board that because the roads and the things we do in town are both equally important, having it as one referendum, having it as one question was better than separately, because they both are equally important. I mean, it's as important to have sidewalks fixed and roads done and the whole bit, as it is a park where both the kids and the seniors can go to, where you can have a safe place, where you can do other things. So, again, those are the two things that I've heard both as a member of the board and also as a member of the town. And I think this addresses both of them, and I think, I respect those that feel it's a want rather than a need, but I truly believe that it's a need, based on, you know, you don't just drive the roads, you want to do things in town, you want to bring your families here, you want to have things that you can do, and I think that's just as important, and you need to get outside and play and, and do things as a family and as a community. So, there was one comment that someone had said that, you know, they may go to a different town, Glastonbury or Manchester or wherever, and they may meet some parents over there, and that's wonderful, but if you're not in the same school system, it's a different kind of connection with that one, you know, better to have them come to our town and meet some folks, and meet your neighbors and whatnot. So I think that has a tremendous value, makes this town a better place to be, so, anyway, that's just my feeling.
Hi, Pat Farley from one seventy-six Mill Hattam Road. Just wanted to, to mention, we talked about wants and needs, and I agree with Mr. Pelton, it's, it's, it's the park, specifically about the park, it's a need. We just finished fall ball, baseball, and we had to play in a tournament that was hosted by East Hampton. Just like last year, we had to play in a tournament that was hosted by East Hampton. Turn, you know, Glastonbury has a park, close area, Colchester, but we don't have a park. We have fields, and we have separate fields. So if you have a child on the majors and the minors, you have parents bouncing back and forth between fields. One of the things I've, I've heard and read were, you know, what else is there to offer with the park? And there's so much more to offer with, you know, people there meeting, right, and friends and family, active with the trail, to be able to walk around the trail. You know, parents, grandparents, being able to go watch their kids, grandkids play baseball, play soccer. There's a lot of, there's a lot of good things there, you know, and again, I think it's time for Portland to have their own park, where people can come to our town and spend their money in our town. We can spend our money in our town. I don't know the numbers, but I know East Hampton does very well with their concession stand at this tournament, well enough to pretty much fund their leagues and more. So, I'm confident that, you know, the in-town residents would definitely appreciate the fields and be able to support their kids, their grandkids, and I think the park is definitely a need, not a want.
Anyone else? Okay, at this point, I'm going to make sure that I follow this accurately as the attorney has requested. So, with the discussion concluded, okay, we're going to adjourn the vote on the resolution to the voting tabulators in conjunction with the election to be held on Tuesday, November eighth, two thousand and sixteen, from six AM to eight PM. The vote on the resolution will be under the following heading. Shall the town of Portland appropriate ten million dollars for construction of a new public park located on Route seventeen? Reconstruction and repair of town roads and sidewalks, and miscellaneous capital expenditures, and finance the appropriation by issuing the town's bonds, notes, and other obligations in an amount not to exceed ten million dollars. Those approving the resolution will vote yes. Those opposing the resolution will vote no. At this point, the meeting is adjourned.